Here, Amanda Barbier. Here, Vice Chair Brakeshaw.
Here.
Erin DeKaiser. Brett Dale.
Here.
Emily Gray.
Here.
Ethan Sutcliffe.
There.
Freddie Striem. She's here. Her picture is here.
I see your picture.
Oh, okay, right there.
Did you say me?
We got it, thank you. Beth Holton-Lowry. Susan Lee. Lisa Berry.
Here.
Patrick Schaper. Robert Dignon. Excuse. Terry Moore. Here. That's his sister. Tom Cyrus.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, just a note that Matt, Board Member Matt Fulton will join us when we get to the recommendations for the salary market. So I'll just let him know already.
Excellent. That sounds terrific. Okay. So we'll start out with a consent agenda, an approval or adoption question. And if you approve the content.
Second.
Okay. You get that kind of a Sherry, okay, and Mick, that's very second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. We'll go ahead and open this up for public comments. If there's anyone online or here that would like to take three minutes and share their stories of trash and whenever they'd like to share, I'll open that up. Well, seeing there are none, I'll close the public meeting and we'll move on to our business items. The first on the top is Utah Association of Special Workers 35th Annual Convention Elevating Public Trust was held November 6th and 8th. Karen Reina?
That's by popular demand.
Yes.
November 6th, Friday, Monday, at the Conference Center in Lakeview. The district begins a live to come to the registration meeting for any board member who'd like to attend. So there's an early bird special that ends Friday, September 13th. So if you are interested, let me know when you're getting registered.
Reina, thank you. For any board members that, you know, I've never attended that.
It's really good.
I thought it was a required training for health workers.
Has it always been there?
They, or do they rotate? Apparently, they've rotated it a bit, but lately, they've been speaking about this convention center because.
It's so central.
It's been, it's not necessarily, I mean, we got people from all over the state, like Georgia and everything coming up, but they used to kind of rotate between there and Provo, but parking horrible in Provo did.
Yeah.
This has just been like a good facility, so I think it's kind of stuck with it.
Okay. Good to know. All right, recommendation 3.2 for salary market adjustment. Do you want to bring that on? Is this the one that?
Yes, I did alert him. I don't know if he.
And I'll turn this over to Pam and Melissa Cotter.
And so just a brief introduction for Melissa Cotter, who is our compensation consultant. We've been working with her in one capacity or another since separations from Salt Lake County. She worked with Jill Carter initially to develop our pay plan. Moved from the grade system that Salt Lake County held to our own pay plan specific for each position. And looking at market to match salaries with that. Good morning, Melissa.
Good morning.
I'm glad we can hear you.
Good, I'm glad to be heard. Always a stress when you're on a video chat.
Thank you. This is a note that Hazel does for our HR manager, wonderful, extraordinary HR manager, is out of town driving back this morning, so she will be excused for today. So Melissa and I will cover this situation. Just a brief introduction to this topic, and I did reach out and was able to visit with most of you because I never like my board members to be blindsided, except with the cost increase. Noting though that we will not need a budget adjustment. We have plenty in the under-expansion personnel appropriation unit. So every year about this time, as you know, we do a COLA at the beginning of the year, but about this time, we have salary market adjustments, especially for driver positions, CDL-specific. So we once again are a little out of whack, as I will put it. And I hope that was a good introduction, Melissa. So we engaged her to help us to look at the markets out there and she can go through that methodology with you. But the bottom line is we are needing to adjust the mid-range for the driver wages 7.61%, and that includes the lead equipment operators as well. How was that for an intro, Melissa?
That sounds great. First of all, I apologize for not being there in person. I had a conflicting appointment that didn't make it, that I could travel there on time. So I appreciate being able to have video conferencing, to be able to still be there to present. Again, if you have questions as I talk, go ahead and let me know and I'll try and see if I can see hands or Pam, if you want to just say, hey, and I can answer questions. Kind of what Pam indicated was there's some key indicators that, that human resources looks for when they start to see, like what Pam said, that pay might be out of whack. And one of them is within recruitment. And that's when Hazel's trying to recruit for vacancies and she's finding candidates that will apply, but then they turn down the job because of the starting pay. And that's even with, even with us using our compression matrix and giving them credit for additional CDL work that they may have. And so there was a concern there. And then the other concern was also with retention. I don't know what the numbers are, but Hazel had indicated there was a number of long-term employees that actually left Woodford to go to, was it Salt Lake City, Pam?
Yeah.
Or is it other, other entities? There were other entities that, that were offering a higher amount of pay for employees that have actually been here for a long period of time. And that's kind of what were the key indicators to say, hey, maybe we're below market. Melissa, will you look at that and, and see what you find? And so we go out and we look at market data based upon private and public sector within the CDL equipment operator jobs. And they're primarily within the Wasatch Front area. And you can see at the bottom of page 28, currently, our midpoint, and that's our market, is at $26.02. And market, according to the compression ma- matrix, is about five years above the minimum quals. So that's the midpoint is someone who we feel is marketable is someone who's had at least five years of experience with, with CDL or with working with Woodford as an equipment operator. When I looked at relevant market data, there was a 7.61% pay increase, which shows a new midpoint or market data of $28. And so looking at that, we knew that it was a significant number that we needed to bring to you to show that this is how much we're below market. And that's probably why those, the key indicators of both recruitment and retention were starting to, to trigger that, that we were struggling to be able to, to offer a starting pay that, that, that applicants were willing to accept, as well as long-term employees were thinking, hmm, maybe it's time to look somewhere else for, for work. Based upon that, we calculated kind of like a cost analysis, but prior to us doing that, we looked at what positions are affected by the equipment operator. And so if you look on page 28 where we have our market pay adjustment recommendations, oh, sorry, it's not just the equipment operator. There's additional pay ranges that are calculated with the equipment operator market data. And we are making a recommendation that those pay ranges be adjusted as well. Part of being able to do this mid-year creates, makes it a little bit tricky. And the reason why I use that as a word is because we're now in August. And a lot of our employees that may be affected by this mid-year adjustment have already received a merit pay increase. Versus those who have a merit date after this potentially gets approved, there's an issue with giving them an increase and therefore giving them a higher level of compensation than those prior to this approval. And so what we've done is we've built in their merit pay increase to be received at this time, as of the approval date versus future within the rest of 2024. And so that's part of the recommendation that instead of waiting until their merit date further in the year, that they're just awarded at this time because it's part of where we place them within the compression management that allows us to be able to do that. They still get a performance evaluation. It's not that that process is skipped. It's just that the pay or that increase comes earlier than potentially they would have received if, if this gets approved. In addition, there's also internal equity pay adjustment recommendations. There's additional positions, primarily the quality assurance inspector and the fleet coordinator, who we look at, even though we use different market data for those positions. We look at those as, as promotional opportunities from being an equipment operator. And when we adjusted the pay ranges for the equipment operator and the lead equipment operator and other positions that, that are impacted by this market adjustment. It created kind of a pay equity or internal equity issue with the quality insurance inspector and the fleet coordinator. And so we are also recommending that that, those pay ranges be increased by 7.61%. And that just kind of keeps our pay ranges healthy. We like to look at the market data, but we also have to look at internal equity as well. And that was our solution for being able to do that. And then lastly, we also identified by doing the internal equity analysis that the asset manager position, it currently is on the compression matrix where it starts at, it does not start at the 25th percentile versus peer jobs, which would be the collection manager position, starts at the 25th percentile. And the reason why we had that in the past was because we have collection supervisors that also start at the 25th percentile. And to make sure that there's not a pay equity issue between the collection supervisor and the manager. Some cases, you may have a long-term collection supervisor that could potentially make more money than their manager, if it's a new manager. That was why we made the recommendation to have those positions start at the 25th percentile. But also in looking at this, when we were kind of discussing internal equity, the asset manager also supervises one of the collection supervisors. And that could potentially become an issue as well. And so we're just making that recommendation to kind of clean that up and to adjust that position to start at the 25th percentile. So if you want to scroll to the next page, any questions though, before we go?
Melissa, we have a question here in the room, and then I just want to also point out that the equipment operator apprentice trainer is, or excuse me, training coordinator is part of that as well. I apologize, we didn't get that on that list, but it is in this updated page scale. So, and I think Board Member Gray may have a question.
On the asset manager, it looks like the midpoint to maximum has not been adjusted. Is that, is that right? I was wondering why that was.
That's a great question. No, we, we did not make a market adjustment to any supervisory or management positions. The only recommendation we're making is that this, they change from a start pay of the minimum of their pay range to the 25th percentile. And how that impacts the current employee is that we look at the compression management matrix, which is on page 29, I believe. And it basically allows that, that position to have further, kind of have, one more, right there. So instead of like, let's say hypothetically, this position was with the company at 14 years. Instead of only being in, in the range 70%, as it currently is, it would adjust it to 95%. So it does allow this position to potentially get an increase based upon the years of service in that position. And, and so, but no, we did not change the pay range on that. Any other questions?
So I do have a question. So when you went out and done this, who are we comparing these wages to? I mean, where, where are you getting these numbers from? And in the line of work that we do here, how are you coming up with this pay scale? Are we, with this raise increase, is this put it at the top in this type of business we do? Or are we in the middle? Can you explain all that to me?
Sure. So we purchase third-party salary surveys. And basically, it's, it's employers and including Woodford will, will submit their data for these third-party salary surveys. And then Woodford purchases those datas and I look at position summaries that are equivalent to the equipment operator. They're not going to be a direct match for match. It's not that I'm looking for other waste management drivers within the bulk of the surveys that I use. But there is one in particular that I do look at. I don't know if any of you are familiar with TechNet. And that is one of the third-party salary surveys that we look at, and that is a direct match for waste management drivers that are out there. So that's one of the data points I use. Another data point comes from a, a company called Employers Council. And they use a software system called PayFactors. And the companies across the Wasatch Front and all of Utah and competing areas will submit their data in for that. And those are both private and public sector employers that are hiring CDL equipment operators that drive larger, you know, gross volume weight vehicles, trucks over 26,000 pounds. We also use a survey called Western Management Group, and it's a Salt Lake area survey. And those are particularly Salt Lake area private and public sector employers who also submit their data for that direct match as well. Where they would have a CDL and also operate equipment, heavy equipment and/or trucks. And so what I do is I look at their median data point and I use that and I age the data so that all of the data kind of has a comparison date. And in this case, I looked at, just looking at current, so as of 9/1/2024. And so all of the data points that I've used have a, have a calculation, I call it an aging calculation, that gets it to that point. So basically, what I, what, what that $28 represents is what the market is today. So we're not paying above market, we're not paying below market. The $28 is just the indicator of this is a, this is the market for a CDL driver. And so that's kind of how we, we do that with all positions. It's kind of our compensation philosophy is being able to look at both private sector and public sector data. But I also use TechNet to make sure that we're not really overcompensating or undercompensating based upon who you're, who the, the private sector, you know, data point. And so it's pulled into it, but we're also considering the private sector as well. Does that answer it, or does that make it more confusing?
All right.
Um, thank you. That was an excellent question. I was wondering that as well, how that works. Melissa, can, when you look at the benefits or the cost of pay, are you also taking into account the benefit package?
I do not. I look at just compensation pay. And so when employers are submitting their data in, it's strictly base pay. So when they will submit their data, it's, this is on average, this is the total number of employees we have in this position, and this is the average that we're paying those employees. And so that's really all my analysis entails is truly what is the pay that is, that is going on out there?
So benefits are after, after the pay?
Yeah, benefits aren't reported, yeah, benefits are not reported within these third-party salary surveys that we utilize. We are just looking at market base pay.
Sherry, what's the percentage of, of your salary to the profit of the benefit? Like, here's your salary, like 30%, how much is the profit of the benefit?
Good question. So when we calculate the benefits, and I say we because last, last year, we've had two new positions that we reclassified. So at that time, our financial, plug in 26.77% to account for benefits. In this particular analysis, I did 28 just for good measure, just because I wanted to have a larger number, if that would be a larger, before you to approve, just in case there was some other adjustment. So it's 20, roughly 26 to 27%, and that includes the URS pension.
All right, anyone else? Comments? Questions?
I'll just say right off the bat, I've been doing some back-of-the-napkin math. And I'm looking at 28 times 40 times 52, looks like it's about a 58,000 salary. And, you know, I think we're all dealing with these pressures in our own cities as well. But, you know, inflation and the, and the pressures to keep people has been so difficult. There's been a ton, a ton of positions in our city that we couldn't justify an increase. But here's the thing is, I think that waste and recycling is such a specific set that I know that it's hard to recruit people from the get-go already. And trying to get people to, to get into this field when there are these many other options and pressures in the industry with a CDL license. I'll just say off the bat, I'd be supportive of this increase. I don't think that a $58,000 salary is egregious by any means. And if we're having issues with retention, I think that the, the raise is justified. So that's just my two cents.
Thank you, Matt.
And to piggyback, and to piggyback on that comment, thank you, that 58,000 a year is midpoint. And if you look at the highlighted gray area where it says five and then it says 50%, we're not paying employees off the bat that just barely fresh have their CDL, that $28. This is someone who comes to the table who has at least five years above the minimum qualifications. And so we feel that that's the market as far as, this is why we'd be willing to pay you this, because you're coming to the table and you have that experience. Because the more experience you can bring, A, you're recruiting a better candidate, and B, you're able to kind of show them the retention, to be able to kind of say, and look at how much, you know, you would have a potential of receiving over the years that you're with us, where, you know, at year 15, you're at the max of the range. And so I, I appreciate that, that it is hard to recruit people, but I don't think that off the bat, making the recommendation to say, oh, we'll just hire anybody at $28. There's still that criteria that they've got to have that minimum qual of at least those five years.
I have a couple of questions. Thanks, thanks for the comments and thanks for what you do, Melissa. I guess my frustration about it is, is I do not like coming in the middle of a budget year and asking for more money for this. It seems like Melissa's job is to make sure we stay in salary range. And I'm just a little bit frustrated that we can't project for a year. It just, it just feels like we're doing this too much to come back in for this. Feels like we have a budget and we need to project out our budget for a year. What, how are we going to stay in salary range for a year? And if we fall a little bit below it at the end of the year, we fall a little bit below it, but then the next budget year, make sure that we're going to stay in line for the next year. And I'm saying it's just, that part is troubling to me, especially because of the economy we're in, especially because what we're doing here, we don't tax people, but in my view, this is a tax. Because I don't have any choice to pay the bill or not, right? Nobody has a choice whether or not to pay this bill. And every time our costs go up, so does everybody's fee go up, right? And we're talking about coming out and, I mean, some of the fee thing for five, you know, $5 a month kind of thing, and it's just layer upon layer for people. And so, so it's hard because I definitely want to pay our drivers what they should get paid. And so it makes you feel like you're undermining your drivers. It's my understanding, I think we're about as full as we've ever been in driver school, since I've been on the board. I think we're only down one or two drivers. Is that correct?
Right now, it is two, and it does fluctuate.
Yeah.
Definitely.
And I, and I know our last year, the last few years, we really were competing against the housing market. Because they're getting all CDL drivers, we kind of keep them or can recruit them because they give bonuses, they give, but they also just give stability like the government does. They don't, same type of benefits that this does. So those all escalate into the pay, even if it's not, you know, what you're, what deposited in your account every month. It is deposited in, in a way because you have stability. I mean, I don't see our garbage, I don't see this company going out of business, they have to, I'm pretty sure they've got to take our garbage. So I guess those are some of the concerns I have. I'd like to see if we can figure out a way to project this out, so we're not doing this midpoint all the time. It just, so I think we've got to have a budget. We know what our, what our budget is, and then we'll get to the next year. We, we understand what the market is, and we go from there. And it's important, I know, I talked to you about this before, but we might not be able to keep up with Salt Lake City.
Right.
You know, I know in our, in our police department, I think that Salt Lake came out and said they're going to try and always pay 10% above every month. So it's like, that's just chasing your tally, you can't ever get there. But I think it's good to stay fair and reasonable, but I, those are my big concerns about coming back in and, and adjusting that all the time because we need to stick within a budget and project out for a year.
This is my first year here, so I would, go ahead.
Oh, I just wanted to make a comment a bit, oh, go ahead.
I want to make sure, it was not directly you. I think you do a great job. I've been impressed by it, but it's been a little frustrating on this every year.
No, and I, I totally appreciate it. I think, I think one thing that needs to be brought out though, is fiscal year challenges. So Woodford is on a fiscal year of January to December, and so we make our budget plan now. And so we, I don't have that crystal ball to say, hmm, what are the fiscal year agencies that start July 1? What are they going to project? I mean, I start talking and asking and, and looking, but you guys already have your budget done and implemented and ready to go before the July 1 agencies even start talking. And so every time that we've come with a mid-year adjustment is primarily based upon, oh, okay, Salt Lake County decided, or Salt Lake City decided 5% this year, you know? And it really made an impact versus, you know, our COLA adjustment or recommendation of that 4%. And then, you know, I agree, I agree that we can't always compete with Salt Lake City. They have a union, they have different things that come into the factor of how they, they, they calculate their wages. But I still think it's, it's a fair thing to look and make sure that we're, we're still offering marketable wages, even if it is mid-year when we come to the board. And again, it gives us an idea to look at that maybe we don't want to do it mid-year, which we hope you do. But if not, then this needs to be tabled for 2025, and it really needs to be figured out as something that we need to address. Because we are, as this analysis has shown, almost, you know, 7.61% below market as of September. We, we ran it out to January 1st, and it puts that it's at 8% below market as of then.
Yeah, I, I don't know what the right solution is, and I understand the nuances, but I, and maybe it's a budget issue, maybe in our budget, we have to do, plan for, you know, plan for this, and then we reserve for a market bounce with mid-year or something like that. It just feels like we just have to plan it out and head, or just hoping that we have, like, but, the solution is, don't worry, we said we have enough left over. And it's like, well, to me, that's not like super good planning on our part. We have to say, okay, we have a plan for, in case this happens, if not, we roll it into a capital project or something like that.
Sure.
For salaries next year. It feels like we have to project this better than coming back in and hoping we have enough left over, not using up the time.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, sorry.
Yeah.
I like what you're suggesting for the future, maybe in future, you're saying, we anticipate that there's going to need to be a mid-year adjustment. We're setting this much, that's what you're suggesting, because I think, I really like that for the future. I don't, it sounds like we haven't done that in the past, so maybe we just need to bite the bullet and care about this year, but not put future board in this position in the future and say, we're going to, we're going to try to plan. And say, we're going to, we're going to try to plan better and say, we think it might be this. And obviously we won't have great numbers, but try to anticipate that. That's what you're saying, right? But I think that's a really good idea. I would support something like that.
Like I said, with Emily, I'm new on, I'm new here too. But the question I have, you guys not do like two and a half percent each year give to drivers? I mean, is that how you do your rate? I know with, with us being a union at the water district, we, we have a contract that we give so much per year. And back when inflation went up, we went, we're going to give another two point seven five percent without going and opening up a contract. But my concern is, is where are we at? Where are we at in the wages when we compare to Salt Lake and Ace disposal and all these other places that do the same type of business we are? That's what I'm more concerned about is the work that we're doing here, not compared to construction.
Right.
Operator. I'm looking at the garbage business. Where are we at with all the other garbage facilities out there?
That's definitely.
Yeah. That's where we're down.
Yeah, I was misunderstanding. I thought it was with anything else.
Some of it is, right, Melissa? Some of it has other industry in it, but, but you try to drill in on generally garbage. It sounds like that's directly related to waste management and collection.
So are you guys trying to be one of, pay the most compared to Salt Lake City? I mean, we're, I mean.
We want to be within that same market. And when we go into 2025, there'll be a recommendation that Melissa will help us with on a cost of living adjustment.
Okay. So is this going to cause a problem down the road with management because you start looking at pay scale and you look at your guys' pay scale? Is there enough gap between the workers and salaries? Or are you guys going to come back and say, we need to up our salary because there's not a big enough gap?
Right now there is a big enough gap and as far as the COLA going into 2025, that would be based on market and that would be across the board for a position.
Will you remind me what our COLA was this last year?
Four percent. And then it is, and you mentioned the, the annual amount that the board has adopted for a merit increase or an annual increase was two percent. That, that's been historically the, the percentage that, that we've recommended and that you've approved every year. And then the COLA is the one that has fluctuated.
It's, I did, Sherry mentioned of trying to anticipate. Is that, is that possible? That's something that we could look at doing so that we don't end up like top gapping in the middle of the year?
I think so. I think we could certainly do that. And, and one of the things that I have further into the, to the discussion with the cash balance is that to keep that, if we keep the ninety eight percent in there, but to the expenditure that we want, make sure that we look at cash projections based on expanding ninety eight percent of our budget, even though our history might say ninety four, ninety six. But if we keep it and we still have that two percent, I mean, that two percent is, you know, almost a million bucks that we can account and have available for a cushion versus the crisis, right? So this year we have it at ninety eight percent. We have the unexpected concrete work that's starting today. And then the fire suppression system and then this adjustment as well. So we could do it that way. Or we can also, you know, add in a little bit more in the personnel and then we can figure out with Melissa, you know, what would be a reasonable amount? Because we certainly wouldn't want to really overdo it, right? Because that would solve our cash projection going forward too. I think it is a balancing act.
Sure.
Yeah. And, and I really appreciate your engagement on this. It's, it's great discussion.
I think I hear two different, for me, it's two different. Number one, are we keeping the fleet that we need to be able to run Workforce? And I'm not so sure since I've been on the board that we've ever been staffed this well. I know that we're down a couple of them, but from what I understand, there are people that would like to participate in the new CDL training program. Is that right?
Yes.
And so I think we can start gathering our own employees that way. I think that's one issue. And for me, I'm not terribly concerned that we might not have enough drivers. I think the industry itself, they've been laying to different companies, different organizations, especially the private has had to lay off some of the CDL, cut back their pay, they cut back their benefits. So for me, I'm not hearing that we're in crisis mode like we were during COVID where we just couldn't get anybody to come in and work. So that's an issue. I'm not terribly worried about that issue until we see people not willing to sign up for CDL training. I think the other issue is the pay scale. And I think I kind of along the line with Sherry is that we have a budget and we need to stick with the budget. If we feel like we're below a budget or below market, then that's something we need to address for our next year's budget. And, and approach it that way because we, then there is the merit increase and then there's the COLA increase. So I feel like we're keeping up, especially when you look at competitive companies in the private sector, they may not be doing that. And it, and I think benefits are a huge attraction to people. I think we, I think we're undervaluing the benefits that that brings to the table and the fact that it's a guaranteed job when we start to see our economy lower, that people are looking for something long-term and secure. And I think that's a real benefit of working for Workforce. So that's where I am in, in those, those two areas. I would prefer to work this into next year's budget. Bring those, those wages up that seven percent if we feel like we need to do that and put it into the budget of this year. Or excuse me, of 2025. But I'm open to suggestions, open to comments.
So one of the questions too that I have is, you know, we at the water district, we're hiring some people and the younger generation don't really look for benefits. They look for the, they look for the dollar because of the pay, their rent or their mortgage. So the benefit to me as we're older, benefits are everything to me, but the younger generation, the benefits are not. They're all about the top pay.
And then if I could just make a note about the vacancies. So it does ebb and flow, but on average, we've been, we've had six driver vacancies throughout the year. So right now it's like it's a good time. We also know that we are hiring people that have no experience in the waste industry. And there's a big difference going from a school bus to driving a garbage truck. So honestly, it's like we, we hired them and are hopeful and provide some training. These are people not in the apprentice program. And we hope, but we are experienced, tell us that unfortunately, within that first one to two years, they may very well need to leave our organization because of the difference in driving the equipment. So I, I hear what you're saying. Fully respected, fully respected.
Yeah, I, I can relate to the same too because I, I feel like if it's something that keeps happening, you can't, you can no longer say this is an emergency. This is something that needs to be planned for. And I completely agree with that, but it just doesn't seem like, I'm not trying to throw anybody under the bus, but that, that that's been the mentality of a previous board. But I think rather than just putting this up to next year's budget, say, we've, we've been put in this position by decisions that were made in the past. So we need to value the employees that we have and try to stay competitive for now. But then make sense for the future so that we don't continue this process, that we clearly do put something in the budget that we're not trying to make you budgetary in the future. But that's what I would say.
No, and that's, that's fair. That's a very fair statement and great comment. Wages just did this all of a sudden with everything in the last four years. It, I, when I came on board, it seemed like we were a little far behind in 2020 and then it just went crazy. Wages across the board with every, with every industry there was. And to your point, Nick, I don't know what the answer is, but for municipalities and government organizations in our city, you know, how, how do we do that? Do we just keep raising the minimum, the start pay for people because they're young and they don't care about their benefits? But then we have a sector that does believe in their, that does see the value of their benefits. So we have to keep them and so we'll constantly do it all to meet two different generational aspects and, and expectation. I don't know. And that's, I'm not talking about Woodford. I'm talking about the proper board. How do you, how do you solve that problem? I have a daughter that just graduated college and she got her check and she came home screaming, look how much they took out! And, you know, when we sat down and said, look at your benefits, she's lucky enough to work for a really great company. She was blown away. Just blown away by her benefits.
The benefits keep going up too and drivers, so that couldn't stop on us.
Right. I mean, drive to close to thirty percent of a lot of your pay. That's, that's a lot. And they may not see that when they're first coming on board, but after a year, I think sometimes they can see that. But I'm willing, any other discussions, comments?
I have another thought too. We were only doing, I'll go ahead. I'll let you go first.
Go ahead, Matt.
I'm so sorry. You know the struggles with being remote. I, I love, I love this discussion. I think there's some incredible points that have been brought up. And I'm just trying to think how I want to approach this and, and, you know, I obviously respect the professionals that run and loss that front waste and recycling and the fact that they're dealing with it day in and day out. And the feedback that I'm getting right now is that there's some, some, some struggles there and they're asking for, for this increase. And I, and, and there's a couple of things. One, I still go back and I, I just look at the wage overall. I think we all know the pressures that we feel in our own lives. I, I still feel that if we're not in market and that wage seems very reasonable. That, but I would also like to see the district try to put some regular order in place. And it sounds like there's some commitment to that, that we might be able to not be as reactive in the future. And if that's something that I can get a commitment from, from the district, which it sounds like they're willing to do and look at if we can approach things differently, I'd be, still be in favor of making this increase at this time with that commitment that we might be able to be a little more methodical about this in the future.
I would agree.
Thank you.
And, oh, actually, my, my thought actually tied, but that currently, I think we're only looking at this every two years. Is that right? Or are we looking at the salaries every year?
For the overall, every position, it's every three years to do a salary market adjust, or salary market survey. For the driver wages, this seems to be every year, almost twice the year because of the difference in fiscal years.
Because that, that was going to be my suggestion is, is, you know, obviously the frequency of what we're looking at these needs to be more frequent so that we can be less reactive or have, you know, much smaller gaps when we're trying to catch up with what the market's doing. Obviously that's not in our control, but what we can control is looking at it and being prepared and understanding that, yes, people, people expect the money to come into their paycheck. It's, you know, yes, as we get older, like to a lot of your points, yes, as we get older, we do appreciate those benefits more and we can rely on those more as we, as we age or as we mature in our careers. But for me, if you, if you pay your drivers well or any of your employees well, you're going to retain that talent. There is a cost of training. There is, there is money that goes and just gets lit on fire whenever you, you lose an employee. That cost of money. I would rather see us send that upfront. And I'm not saying like, hey, we're paying baseball players now. That's not the expectation. But if you, the easiest way to show your employees that you appreciate them is to their bank account. Let's be honest. Like that is literally the most thing, that's the biggest thing that will affect them. Secondly, obviously then actually having really good human relations and different things like that that show that we care. We want to make sure you're taken care of. If we take care of your, you know, if we take care of our employees, they're going to take care of us and through, throughout our clients and customers.
Just to back that up, they've, they've done that in the teaching industry as well throughout the entire state of Utah where they're front loading the salary and the, and the pensions and the other benefits are things that are keeping people to stay long-term, knowing that those people that are just getting in in those, that first decade, that hourly, that salary wage matters the most to them. So the state's really kind of flipped it on its head and which is why you're seeing these larger upfront investments in these teachers, again, with those benefits keeping them for the long term.
Matt, let's go district give back.
But anyway, that's, that's kind of it. You know, there's, there's a lot of, yeah, we could do better. We can plan better on the board's part as far as budgeting and accommodating for these kinds of things. Yes. But there's always going to be a situation where something happens. Inflation, COVID. COVID was the number one reason that everybody's like, hey, I'm going to go be a YouTuber. I don't have to vote.
Yeah.
Right? Then every industry was starved of employees. Every industry. And now everybody's realizing they're not making it as a YouTuber. So they're coming back to the workforce. But, you know, I, I work for a trucking company. We're not, we're not docking salaries or any of that other stuff that was mentioned earlier. I'm, you know, granted, we're one of the largest companies in, in the country, but they're definitely, they, they use that same kind of mentality. They want to be at the top of the base scale and they have to look at it every three months.
And I agree with you great, but the best, the problem is too, is we got to pass it on to our residents.
Absolutely.
And where I live, outlive, you know, I mean, it's a struggle.
Absolutely.
Yeah. That's, that's the difference between being a private entity versus a government entity.
Right.
Is because we truly are placing a tax on people and they don't have an option. They have an option whether or not to use your trucking.
Right.
They do not have an option whether or not to use it. So there has to be such a fine line. I don't disagree with the pay and fight and it's important to keep employees. Models are super important, but I just believe in, in a government entity because where your funds are coming from, you have to straddle that line really closely to make sure that you benefit our part. And I, and I hundred percent understand exactly what you're saying. But I promise you one thing, if you wanted to, okay, then we'll take away the benefits.
Right.
Be done with them and raise your salary. We'll keep people that way either. And, and there is a, a cost, there's a benefit associated with working for somebody that you know are going to have a job tomorrow. If the economy goes out from underneath you, guess what? You'll still have a job. So, so a matter of fact, there's a maturity level that's associated with that. I also believe that, kind of like the dad, that every time we turn around, we have to train everybody good. We have to get the newbies in training. As soon as you're trained good, they go somewhere else with Pedro and the boss. But, but I can't see. But I think that, I think that you are addressing that in your CDL training and keeping them up, bringing them up and, and helping them learn. I think that's money well spent for us. But anyway, I don't know what the solution is, but it, it, it might, I guess at the end of the day, I want our drivers to be paid well also because it's important. And things like that is, is terrible for, for, for anybody, any industry, right?
But we got to remember where it's not guaranteed. No matter how much we pay them, they can always go.
Well, I think she means the opportunity.
Right, right. No, no, I understand.
And, and I would say ninety nine percent, yes, but mostly true. We could fit. There is, there is that. We could.
Nothing's guaranteed.
Nothing is guaranteed.
But I was going to tell you, tell him and take it over that garbage.
Yeah.
Sorry, Lori. But it's, I guess it's kind of like healthcare. Garbage is always going to have to keep getting to the line.
Yeah. And you actually said it to my point, that, that maturity level is where, it's where they recognize that point or not, right? I mean, you do, but it's ninety percent. But how do you get those new drivers in? But they're not seeing that as an opportunity.
Yeah. Hopefully the CDL training program should help us with that. I think that's a brilliant idea.
It really is helpful. And I mean, we, we're looking at all creative ways. I mean, can we expand that without actually adding more FTEs by reclassifying more positions? I mean, that's part of the creativity, right? How do we get people in the door to stay? So far, those apprentices are, are just dedicated and want to be here. And Renee, you had a point?
Our last in this opening, we have to laugh.
Woo hoo. Very great. That's awesome. It was just very, just a.
Yeah.
I just think that's a great thing. And, and if we take, you know, a hundred grand and, and increase the FTEs a little bit on that side to make sure we keep that premiership going, then we're creating our own driver or something like that, you know, and so that we, because I do believe that there are the, there are the, usually there are some holy stuff, but companies that bring you in and train you and things like that. But, and they, well, that remains to be seen.
All right. Is there any other different comments or I would like to make a comment. I'd love to hear your thoughts.
My name is Lucy Kelly and I am an HR payroll specialist. I just wanted to make a comment because I feel like I do have, you know, a good. I just wanted to make a comment because I feel like um I do have, you know, a good insight on this one because I actually did recruiting for this position. Um and I will say that when I first started about six months ago, it was actually fairly easy to hire people. But within the last several months, it's actually become a real uphill battle and it is the wage. Um we had several really good qualified people that we were about to get on board, but then we had to. See walk off because they would not accept our pay. They said, I'm sorry, I really need more than that. And I love what we're, I love our benefits. I think we do have excellent benefits, but the problem is if you're not making enough to feed your down here to pay your rent. Yeah, the benefits isn't gonna cut it for certain. Um and the other thing that I see a lot because I do, I'm also H R. Um I do get a lot of drivers that come in and chat with me and they are struggling because of how many unfilled reps they're always having to back up. I can understand where we're losing them, so I really don't see how things are gonna get better. For this time, I know we have our people at this moment, but it's really, as soon as we get somebody, we need somebody else and so. It's just really hard to try to get people, retain people, all of it right now. I think that it's not. Anything that we've done wrong. I think that then everything is really shifting quickly. And I think if we don't act, then we may end up having a problem where we don't have enough drivers to send out on our rep.
They give us scenarios to change that and when they come in, the two dollars an hour makes a change in whether they cover.
Yes, yes. Well, and that often they will say, can you go up, you know, X amount? And sometimes it's twenty-five cents, but if we're completely unable to make that, you know, they, they just at that point have to move on and. It's usually to a company where they're making an extra couple of dollars an hour and we can't compete with that. It could be better not.
Thank you. Okay, I think we'll go ahead and, and let Pam, you wanna wrap up or?
I think we're good. I just, I'm gonna ask for, I'm, I am requesting approval of this uh. Salary market adjustment for our, the crux of our employees. If you look at that page scale. And everything that's highlighted, these are people that are out there on the street doing the work. And then the apprentices, the scrap drivers would also receive an increase as well. Um even though they're, you know, we're gonna end the season in September, they're still leave and we want them to stick around. And they help with managing the, the, the huge piles in the farm certainly. So anyway, I am requesting this for approval.
Okay.
That's fair.
Yeah.
Every move that we uh approved that uh salary market adjustment for the equipment operators. Uh as noted in, in our package, I just wanna also comment, I believe that everybody's comments are great. Uh it, it is a, it is a situation that is everywhere as we've all noted. Uh and I think that given that we were under in salaries because the patient season, the special impact. Uh our year and the series uh definitely noted that we need to try to build that into our next year's budget. Uh in any event that happens, we are requesting for good action. So based upon those comments, I, I would get a move that we approve this uh market adjustment.
Nope, second half.
Alrighty, we got two seconds.
We have two seconds, we're good.
That's, we have a four. Okay, so I'll take favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Any of the. Any of those opposed? Okay, the motion passes, you have.
Thank you. So we will make this effective because we start the new payroll today.
And thank you everyone for these discussions and your, your thoughts. Um it's, it's just really. As a chair, it makes me, it makes me leave and go. We got everything out, we discussed every possibility, everybody's clear on how this works and, and that to me is really important. And um we're grateful, I'm grateful for you guys.
Grateful for the discussion. It's the, sorry that I was the one that didn't mention that, but. The employee needs support is like, does that mean value? Yeah, like the pan. Values that are she doing this every day, but from that, that perspective, assuming that. Board and the collective is thinking about it.
Yeah, absolutely. And I thank you all very much and it was great discussion. I really appreciate it. Love it.
I will add that, even though I was. Every people because, because when we've, we did, it all passes to every other resident in our firm's area.
Eighty-six thousand homes.
Yeah, exactly.
Also add, you know, that you guys made those that were more seemingly on the fat. Made very good observations, but yes, we can do better at planning in this. So I, I hundred percent agree with that. I didn't say it, but.
Day, a board is worthless if it doesn't push back on whatever and whether or not you even feel that way. It's important because that's where creativity is sparked. That's where programs like the C D L training program come up. Um that's where understanding of what people in the industry and people at the company are going through and without those tough conversations. Then all we are is just a, a, a stamp and very little changes and, and very little creativity. So I'm always appreciative of all these conversations, so and grateful for those drivers. I think uh cool job. I wanna be that kid in Taylor's field that runs ahead. Yeah, so we'll move to the general manager's report, Pam.
All right, thank you. So I wanted to bring it uh follow-up items back to the table because I know. Uh in the July meeting, we didn't, we had just gotten the maintenance clock the week before the board meeting and we did not have time to dig in. Manager Andy King, our asset manager who's. Um that's being done right now and then also Matt Ferguson, our, our controller treasurer. For diving in and helping me to get these numbers before you. So as you know, I, in last. The second quarter compared to the, the quarter of twenty twenty-three, we were four hundred eighty-one thousand dollars more and it's like, why in the world is that? So looking at it and dividing up the cost and looking at parts, truck shop labor. Uh cause these are the main things that we talk about are the parts and the truck shop labor. So it's like, let's dig in and give that information. One, we need to know. And then two, report outs. Uh and then there's shared miscellaneous costs. You can see that's a small percentage. But in looking at his history, the parts are one of the highest costs uh historically over the past few years. Um versus the labor, the truck labor shop. So that is something that has really escalated. We talked about the why. Um but as you can see, that equates to that um four, four hundred eighty-one thousand dollars more or higher than last year. So percentages are, are historically the thing. Has changed are the labor rates, of course, and the cost increase. So we had, one of the biggest things to point out is we have more trucks, cause we have new trucks. We haven't, we haven't had new trucks for a while. And it was one of those, you know, we just were going about our business. It's like, oh wait. We had more trucks that were being serviced by our, by the mechanics in the shop that we contract with. And then also, um you know, the other cost increase with new trucks is that we needed to pay up um on our. Operational expenditures for the greasing system that would normally go part of the capital cost. So that was something to jump off the page. That's sixty-eight hundred dollars per truck and I believe there's gonna be ten of those trucks coming in. So we're gonna pay that in operational expense.
So let me just clarify for those who are new. Sorry to interrupt.
Nope.
We buy a new truck and then we put sixty-eight hundred dollars into some.
Greasing system.
Some prep for it to work the way we need it to.
Correct. Otherwise, it would come completed with that. But for this particular procurement process that we need to expedite, as you know, because we couldn't get trucks off our current contract. And when Rachel told and Andy, we were able to find the other procurement called Surswell, which is nationwide for government entities. Um so with that, these, these trucks and the, the body name is branded New Way. They um, they couldn't meet that spec at the time, so we just said, we'll just pay for that. So I wanted to make sure I pointed that out to you.
So did we budget it in capital expenditures and it just come and ask the maintenance budget versus the other? That we've really had interplanted it to come out of a different pocket, right?
Correct, yeah, displaned, thank you.
So higher in our capital.
Well, should be, should be lower depending on the price of the trucks and when we get them. So, but yeah, we shouldn't have any surprises in that capital expenditure. In fact, we hoping to be a little bit under. Because we're gonna have a delay on two of the four people trucks going into. But we'll get into that with the further discussion. So I, I, I can go into a lot of detail if you'd like me to. Um but those are the biggies of, of the why. Uh the shop loader hours did go up a thousand hours. Um and then again, I think it's because of the fact that we had more trucks that would be in service. And then just to note that it does standardly, it does, by standard, it costs about fifteen hundred dollars per truck or new truck to come into service. Because we need to change over the G P S, the camera system, the light, all the bell and whistles, the speed, the truck wraps. Um and so forth. So if you don't have any questions on that. You'll see a little different in the third quarter financial report in October as well, but we'll make sure we have, hopefully we'll have the, the information upfront.
Um the question.
Okay, moving into the cash, uh the cash projections, uh oh, excuse me, number two. Sorry, jumped ahead. This is part of the twenty twenty-five budget priorities and board member, uh board chair Barbieri mentioned that we wanna keep up with the truck replacement schedule. So we don't have uh. Such aging trucks that maybe, you know, by desire, the driver doesn't wanna drive them or there's a more downtime associated if they are driven. Um so just to give you a, a background, I think you all know, um right now we have um sixteen toll trucks that we're hoping to come in. Twelve this year, uh or excuse me, I should say twelve replacement trucks, eighteen G and four diesel in. That were ordered in twenty twenty-three off of Sourcewell will be coming in. We are gonna get um all of them except for the two diesels this year.
Do we know like when this year?
Well, it's projected that we'll get some in um next month. And then we're hoping to get some in the November, December. And then we've looked at the cash inlay, cash outlay to make sure that we have enough cash. To pay for them and we do. Um the tricky part will be going into February next year for the other two. Um you know, since we have a delay on cash, we're pretty confident we'll be able to cover that. Yeah, thank you for asking that. Uh so looking at purchase right there, one of the things we've always talked about is the aging trucks. But the other thing to note is, is something that it's really hard to quantify with dollars and terms of downtime. So looking at the age of the truck and, and how many days of downtime there are. One of the things that's interesting is it takes about thirty days on an average to get a new truck into service. Working out the kinks, et cetera. Now understand that there's, we may not pay for working out those kinks. They might be vendor warranty issues that need to go back. There might be something that has to be tweaked. By Allison who does, does the engine and I, I'm throwing these things out by memory and I might be wrong. But at any rate, uh you know, the new way or something like that for the body, for the arm. So there's warranty issues that the vendor's responsible for. But then like I said, there's an initial startup cost that we. Um so I wanted to put in the, the uh downtime as part of that and then looking at the years. Uh of age over here on the left hall and David Ica put together this table for me and Andy King. Um understanding the, the age of the truck and how many we have within that range. Uh and then the cost per mile and you'll see that there is a higher cost in, in the sixth year. Um and, and then of course would equate to a few more down, downtime days, but there's also the downtime historically. And again, that's what we can, you know, we can't account for off life because there is a lost opportunity going forward. There's no fact of the matter to keep going.
Even the eight, nine, it goes down and the average day down is way long. I'm sure you can get outside those trucks out there.
That is correct. That is correct. Good memory there, yes. Um and then this next um bar graph shows you on average over the years. Um how many days, you know, trucks down per day. And so we have a relief pool. But you know, that relief will age. So what that really means is that we have a certain percentage of our fleet that is actually relief. And they're meant to be released. They're not supposed to be going into the shop. They're not supposed to be going out on the road. They're actually released. And roughly, there's six to seven of those. But with aging trucks and so forth, we may not have that relief pool. There's been days where drivers are, you know, sitting around. And we hate that. Again, lost opportunity cost. Hard to equate with dollars. Um so I don't know if you have questions about that, but I wanted to kind of just solidify. Why we wanna keep up with that eight truck replacement going forward. We're behind and I think after this year we'll catch up. And hopefully going into next year, we can get those orders placed and get them in. Okay, no questions on that. Um you know, look back as they, you know, looking at the cash and how do we account for that? So you saw that big decrease uh that's up there again, right, right there before you, you see it drop from about ten million. Down to the six, six point eight roughly, six point five, excuse me. Um and so just taking a look back to one, I wanna make sure that, that I'm very aware of what's taking place and then we tore it out. Uh so that you all know where it was. It's, it's not that it ran off. It's that we actually needed to spend the money. And big part of that is truck purchases. So if you'll just scroll down to the next page. Renee just kind of looked back and again, this is the hindsight, right? So in twenty twenty-one, the cash projection philosophy was changed. Uh looking at forward going into twenty twenty-two and just a reminder or a pressure that we had anticipated that fee increase going into twenty twenty-two. But adjusting that philosophy from a ninety-eight percent going down to ninety-four percent. Uh of the budget expenditures, we saw the cash being pushed out. Uh that we wouldn't have to have that fee increase in twenty twenty-two. Um but the, the, the drag about that or the problem that that created is, is that we had higher inflation than we've ever experienced, right? So that ninety-four percent wasn't just a swag. It was looking at historically what could be expanded of the budget in the past. And I understand, you know, that was something that the former finance director and I talked about. It seemed like it'd be safe. Unfortunately, it, it created some issues going forward. Um so the fee increase and. The last fee increase prior to the, the projected twenty twenty-two was in twenty eighteen. We rated that fee two dollars and twenty-five cents per home per month, moving from fourteen seventy-five to the seventeen fifty. In twenty twenty-two, preparing for the twenty-three fee increase. Uh the amount of the increase was based upon pa- past projections that that ninety-four percent of the budget being expended. Uh so we planned for the two fifty and then noting that the, the um table that's down below that lists out the cost increases. Shows that really we needed about three dollars and forty-five cents per home per month increase. We landed with two fifty because it, you know, again, it's the timing of those projections, right? And that's what's hard. It's like, where's our crystal ball? Um so we went forward. Uh the improved the increase of two fifty per mo- home per month equates to. Um two hundred and twelve five per, per month increase of revenues. And so basically it's six, six hundred and thirty-seven five per quarter, one point nine million uh annual cash available with three quarters being billed. And then some of you may all remember that we have staff brought before you. And the fact that, um so let me get to this first. In twenty twenty-two, we expanded ninety-six percent of our budget expenditures. Was a two percent higher uh and that dollar amount was four hundred and seventy-one, almost four hundred and seventy-two K. Additional cash that we needed to expend. And at that time, we transferred over five hundred thousand from our investment fund. With Zion's capital over into our P T I F and we used it to uh pay our bills. And then in twenty twenty-three, that's when we brought back to the board as staff to say, hey, you know, we were off, just so you know. Um one is the above amount and then the other thing is that we accidentally accounted for the six hundred and thirty-seven five. As you're in cash, when it's really accounts receivable going into the next year. Um and then. Basically, we adjusted the cash projections up to ninety-six percent of the budget expenditures. Due to, due to the rising cost of businesses, that was about four hundred thousand. So again, I'm just tallying this up so that you know. Um what we needed to do as staff to adjust, adjust and, and drop down that cash so we can pay our bills and pay for these trucks coming in. Um and then as you may recall, for those of you that were here last year, we needed to make a budget adjustment for operational costs. Six hundred thousand dollars more um that we. Six hundred thousand dollars more, um, that we needed to take out of the cash projections and, and cash itself. Um, so at that time it was, we're going to make, keep it ninety eight percent budget expenditures, as I mentioned. So we have a cushion versus the crisis to make sure we can account for, you know, unexpected things that pop up as I mentioned previously. Um, so the grand total that we were off was one point five million. I apologize. Again, it's that crystal ball and we'll try to do our best going forward. Uh, and then the, the drop down to the, we had to withdraw three point two million. I mentioned that I think in the last July meeting that we had to withdraw from our cash investment account. The Zion Capital three point two million to pay for trucks. And as I may have mentioned, I'll just remind that we're hoping not to have to draw that down more. Um, with our new finance director coming in, she doesn't have experience in managing investment fund. So could we take that and bring that cost that we'll gain at Zion's right now in house? So we don't have to pay a fee for them to manage our cash. So that's something that we'll explore. Um, and I'll get into our new finance director that's coming on. Um, so that long and short of it, uh, any questions so far? Right now we have enough, as I mentioned, we have enough cash in the bank to pay for the new trucks coming in as well as the light duties that we hope to receive. Those are trailer trucks, uh, that we use. And then we also have a hooker that's due to arrive, um, on that one. Any questions on that? I went through it pretty quickly. Okay, moving on to, um, our updates. So we are in the process of launching. In fact, I think we just did this last week. Is that right, Renee? When we launched the benefit? Uh, broker and it, uh, RFP. So we want to go out for a request for proposal to hire a new benefit broker to manage our health insurance. Um, getting the, the best rates out there on, for our employees, for our health insurance, dental, et cetera, E A D. Um, and we really feel like we can get somebody that's, that would be more engaged with us and, and better service bottom line. So we'll see if we can come in with really, um, good rates. I know that we'll have an increase before, but hopefully it won't be as large as if we didn't do this process. Okay? Um, and then we have completed the RFP process for the financial advisory. Zion's was the pick, the vendor, uh, Jason McGee, or yeah, thank you. Um, came in last week, last Friday and met with me, Renee, Andy King, who are the asset manager and Matt Ferguson, our consultant, to walk through, you know, here's where we're at. This is what I need from you. And then what do you need from us as far as information? Uh, we had the kickoff meeting, so obviously sending them a lot of information on our truck replacements. Uh, where we're at with our cash, uh, some of the looks of the fee increase, uh, you know, to try to help us be creative. You know, they have, um, options that they'll present to me and then eventually to you for going forward into the budget. Would it be, make more sense to lease, uh, our trucks at Owens? So they would just basically purchase them for us upfront because as you know, we pay cash right upfront. So if they pay for that, it, as you know, it's just going to delay the payment down the road. But what would that look like? We have never looked at that before. I think we need to because we're in a very unique position right now. Never been here before. So that's one of the things I've always heard. If you're in over your head, as a public administrator, hire a consultant. So that's what we're doing. That's what we're doing. Uh, and anyway, I'm very confident that it was a great positive meeting. I have no question they can help us to navigate this.
Yeah, really interesting.
Yeah, it's exciting.
A new eye.
Yes.
What they're using out there. That's cool. Very cool.
Oh, uh, board member Stringham does have a, a, for hand raise.
Laurie?
Yes, I was just going to say, um, I know that he's done a lot of, uh, good for a lot of other special districts in the past. And Zion's always good at, at looking at other options and ways of being able to save money and help us reanalyze things. So, um, great choice. I don't know how the decision was made, but, uh, yeah, that's a, that's a good choice on, on your part. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. And then, uh, just an update, uh, next page, Renee, if you would. Uh, on the concrete work, I mentioned it started today. That's, and just a review, it's twelve inches from the curb. And the, the projected timeline is about four months for both sides. Now that, that's a, it could be longer, as you all know, depends on weather. But we have quoted, I had, I asked them to add into the quote a rebar. That's a reinforcement as it cures. And we didn't want to have, you know, eight inches of concrete because they were going to do a four, four inch slab and then do another eight inch. And it said, no, no, you know, with the experts weighing in of engineering upstairs and then fleets experience when they had their support. They said definitely go with this, the rebar reinforcement. So that did increase the cost, but not too bad. It's going to be about a hundred and eighty three, uh, thousand, which we do have. And I'm anticipating that being a capital expense that we should be able to fund because we're not going to get those other two diesel until next year. Um, big announcement, uh, oh, the truck barn supplier suppression system is almost complete. Um, anticipating even replacing the, um, compressor, excuse me, compressor, uh, that we, even if we replace that, we should not exceed that forty three thousand dollars. And again, seventy eight percent of that is going up to the Salt Lake County, um, operations because they have the majority of their trucks parked in there. And then I'm very excited and I, next month I'll be able to introduce you to Helen Kurtz. She is a certified public accountant and has accepted our offer. She'll join our team, uh, on Monday, September ninth. She wanted to give a three week notice, which I totally respected. Um, she brings a history of effective leadership and management. When I reached out to references, you know, one, one, her direct supervisor boss, administrative director over there at Sandy was sad. I knew that we, yeah, she's, she's amazing. I know she'll provide great leadership here for our budget and finance team. Um, she served for thirteen years as treasurer controller in the past ten years, well, past ten years as both roles. Uh, and thirteen years prior as a controller. Um, so I mentioned the possibility of her managing our investment accounts. We'll let you know more on that later. Any questions? Well, chief, we're all, and then we want to keep up with everything. And then I'm, I've asked Matt to come up and help with this next one. Fraud risk assessment. There you are.
Your only luck.
Pat, welcome.
Yep.
So every year we, we have to conduct our annual fraud risk assessment. And do you want to kind of go over some of the highlights?
Uh, yeah, basically, uh, this is the same thing that, uh, you know, that you review every year. So those who have been around, uh, more than a year are familiar with this. Uh, basically, uh, the state auditor requires the board to review, um, a checklist of fraud indicators or things that would increase or decrease our risk of fraud. Uh, so if you'll, uh, scroll to the checklist. The main areas, uh, as you can see, the one that's worth the most point, two hundred points is, does the entity have adequate basic separation of duties or mitigating control as outlined in the, uh, basic separation of duties questionnaire? I've answered that. Yes. Uh, and they, you know, I don't know if I need to go down all of these different areas. The main thing, um, as you can see, we have a, a pretty high score and there are a couple of things as in the past that, uh, we haven't had as much of, I guess you could say where we could check yes for. Uh, but usually in those areas, it's a matter of, um, taking into account the size of the organization and the cost and have to weigh the cost and benefits of, um, of having some of these answered yes. For example, the internal audit function we talked about last year. Does having an internal audit function, um, uh, is that extra twenty points worth the extra profit to happen now? And so, you know, it's up to you whether you want to do that or not, but personally I feel like it's, um, pretty well covered through the external audit. And we have some, uh, good mitigating controls for, uh, everything else that has lower points. So. Any questions? The next piece is the, is the actual checklist for separation of duty. And again, those places.
Matt, can I interrupt just briefly? On number four, employees elected officials required to annually commit to writing to a by, by an account. Oh, excuse me. Yes. By my statement of ethical behavior. I know with the city I'd have to do that. Most of you probably do too. That would be an easy thing, I think. If you want to add that unless I, there's been a reason we shouldn't. Who would be used to free, yeah, if you want to go ahead and do that. That would be easy to, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that. Any other questions?
Do you kind of already be that internally with your employee?
For those that handle, uh, fun, they do have to sign, they, uh, reviewed the SOP. We can easily add an ethics statement. We have one in our policy manual, um, right underneath our mission. So we can add that in and have them signing. Um, I don't know, we could certainly pay it out to, you know, our, our drivers and so forth. And I'm just not sure if that would be in the revision.
Yeah, I don't know. I suppose I was looking more at the board.
Board. Okay. And then I think to, to make sure that we show our due diligence with our people that are handling the phones too.
Yeah, I like it.
And I could be wrong, but I think there's the, uh, some warning when the board members get sworn in that they are to uphold those.
Well, and any conflict of contracts that may come up. So Rachel, if you want to throw something together and, yeah, an easy check off.
It's always been a little bit of an awkward requirement. It seemed easy enough, but you guys aren't the only ones that don't do it because it's a bit weird asking people to sign every single year, especially employees. And again, it kind of goes to that side of the district type question. And you have a bunch of drivers who are trying to get them to sign the thing every year that's, uh, he ethically it just. And it doesn't do much on the form. That's why a lot of districts don't do that one. But I mean, it, like you said, it's all easy enough to do. So, yeah.
Yeah, I think I, I read it also was just elected officials, but.
Yeah.
Employees.
All employees. Yeah. And so, yeah.
So this would be either or, then I would drop it.
I, I would drop it.
If I remember right, that depends how this discussion's been in the past as well.
They, they've created this form and it's not necessarily kind of statute. There's no statute requirement that you do that. And so then the pay dollars come and put this form together. It's a little weird because we're not required to, but you get points if we do it. But what if we don't do it? What's the consequence of having a low score or anything?
Okay.
You know, so it's like, it's, it's, it's a little bit of a form that they give us. And it's also made, it's like a one size fits all. So everyone gets the same form, but it really makes sense. So I think we can feel confident that we have a low score as it is, but it's also not. The only one that had that.
No, not that. I was talking about that number one. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. So Matt, you'll, we'll step that is, they will, Matt and I will sign it. The audit is required every year. And because we're on a calendar year, it's, it's always been a little fuzzy to when it was really glued for us, but we, we extended mid-year, uh, the following year for last year.
No worries.
Yeah, we're good.
Clear as mud. Okay. Anyone want to make a motion? We do have to approve this one or not. Oh. At three point four, twenty three, twenty twenty three year end fraud.
Three, 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 year end presence.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion passes as well. Thank you. Matt, thank you. Uh, three point five, review of the twenty twenty five budget priority count.
Yeah, so this is just, and as you can see, this is a draft, it's a work in progress, but I just thought I would get something before you so that you know it's, as what we are working on this, that as staff. So, um, I, I, the whole goal is to sustain the current service level uh, to what the residents count on, what, what they need and what they want. What we're required to do is that weekly garbage collection. Along with that is recycling. As you know, the seasonal container is very popular. Uh, we've been able to do sixty containers a day safely, uh, as safely as possible this year. And we want to keep that going forward next year. And as you may recall, that starts mid-April and runs through September and moving clockwise throughout the district. I think we started in Mill Creek this year. What? In the whole city? Okay. And then we moved over to, um, Murray Holiday and around, as you know, right now I think we are getting both the same as we will right now. And Ted'sville might have already scheduled and booked. Um, and then the seasonal services with the central leaf bag and Christmas tree collection. Uh, landfill vouchers, which the residents can take their own truck or trailer load. And then central glass collection. Now I just wanted to point out that all of those services are included in this, what is now nineteen fifty a month, fifty eight, fifty a quarter. Um, and then additional services with the trailer rental. There is some subsidy for that reduced rate of trailer rental that is subsidized by the monthly fee. Um, but it does also have a revenue stream of its own. And so we're not right now suggesting that we raise the one ninety for the bulk, uh, the fifty five for the green. So like that's sustaining right now. Um, and then as you know, we have the, the subscription green. And I am proposing that we raise that a dollar fifty per, per subscriber per month. Um, I heard from Patrick Craig, who is the, uh, fellow waste executive director for Salt Lake County that they are raising their green fee going into next year. And I believe it was three dollars per ton. I know Patrick's on, but if I get that wrong, I'll have the exact. Um, and then to the curbside glass, we currently charge eight fifty a month. I feel like that's fine and dandy. We contract with Momentum. So the, we give them eight dollars a month. We keep the fifty cents from administrative processes because we bill and then we charge for the can right up front. Um, and then other goals and priorities, we always want to look for ways to improve efficiencies. Uh, as you know, we've been looking at, uh, look, you know, only going go backs for truly missed streets where we made an error. So we'll shore that up, see what we can do further on that. And then we want to look at, as I mentioned, possibility of expanding apprentice program to again grow our old driver, keep that loyalty. Um, and then looking at load management for recycling and for garbage. So we know that, um, tonnages have gone down recycling, but the bulkings have increased. But is there a way that we can improve hauling so we don't have so many trips going to the, the, the processing facility for recycling and also for garbage? What can we do to improve that? That could trim costs. If we can get that low remaining fruit, it would trim it quite a bit. Um, and then we are administratively, we're looking at switching timekeeping systems for payroll. And this would help to streamline the payroll, payroll process. Uh, we currently use Chronos for timekeeping. We like it because with the time clock for the drivers, they swipe their card. So with switching to another one, unfortunately, there may or may not be that option. So what does that look like for our frontline staff trying to use that system? We don't want to launch that till we know for sure. And it would be a cost savings for, um, subscriptions for the old system or the current system. It would be now about nine thousand a year, I, I think. Matt, is five, six or nine?
Uh, it's overnight. It's about nine, uh, seven hundred and eighty a month.
So we're looking at that. Um, the other thing is, is when we look at, um, the health insurance option. Uh, I mentioned having a robust benefit package for maybe at a lower cost or at least not hitting those high market costs going into twenty twenty five. Uh, and then the, um, investment accounts coming in-house. The other thing is, is exploring, and I don't want to panic anyone, but exploring an option of paid time off versus sick and vacation separate. And I think it, and looking at the initial evaluations and talking with some of your city that are on the PTO system versus the separate, it's a little easier to manage. I think that for, uh, frontline staff, they have one pool of leave that they use for both sick and vacation. So, but would that also help with use or burn as you use it or earn it? Burn as you earn with the sick leave, you know, would that help? We don't know. But we're exploring thoughts right now. And then would that reduce liability for the time for the district? Okay. No questions so far? And then looking at, uh, the revenue. And then looking at, uh, the revenue amounts and the sources to effectively manage the continued increase in cost. Of course, truck purchases and prices, we're always looking at that. Um, and looking to see what do we need for twenty twenty-five labor markets? You all talked about it and hit on it. What can we do to be proactive with that? Um, looking at fuel prices, think that we, things that we can't control, unfortunately. Uh, maintenance shop rates will get, we've already heard about three dollars an hour. In the past, it's been eight to eight fifty an hour. So we will receive an increase there, but not as large as we have. And then landfill fees for waste disposal, where so far I've only heard that green is going to go up, however, with, um, the Trans Jordan landfill, they have historically gone up two dollars per ton, uh, every year. So anticipating that next July, they're currently at forty-one dollars a ton. And then the prospecting fees for recycling, we hopefully have a crystal ball that's right to determine what that's going to do with the markets. And did board member Stringham have a comment? She, oh, she had to leave. Okay. All right. Uh, so just to, to reiterate, to restate the fact that we're not the only ones that are looking at raising rates or have raised rates. So I, in the next slide, um, I have highlighted in yellow, other entities that have raised their fees. Um, I've mentioned Salt Lake City. They went up twelve dollars per home per month in a three-year period. They have seven year gap since their last fee increase. So it was twenty twenty, um, two, I believe, their fiscal year of twenty twenty-two, they went up seven dollars per home per month. And so they hit a larger amount right off the bat. Last year they went up two dollars and then this year they went up three. So, um, it's a total of, I hope that told us twelve, twelve dollars per home per month. And then this, I just put up as a possible, um, with a five fifty per home per month increase. That's just a possible. Um, looking at time value, money to carries as long as we could. That's not looking at, you know, leasing trucks, right? So that would just be a fee increase.
So that five fifty, they, um, how long does that take us up to? Cause I know the last meeting we talked about that and to take the bandage off and just raise it up to whatever. But I struggle a bit by paying extra money that we don't have to pay it.
Right. So I, I put in five fifty because the one that would rip the Band-Aid off was six fifty. So, um, seeing that that wasn't really appetizing for anyone and, and certainly for our residents, we want to be able to make sure they can manage as best they can. Um, I went with the five fifty and so the cash projections will come next month when I do the proposed budget. But I'm just going by memory. I think that carried us out three years, uh, roughly before another fee increase. Uh, and then the other thing to consider is what our trucks did involve. Because that's how, what will influence our cash. And we sell trucks because we have not tried to sell a side load for a while, except for the one that, um, turned over. And we did get a nice price for that. We, we're still waiting for the truck that caught fire. It's still sitting on one of that two. We have a vendor that offered, but not put forth the money. So it's still sitting there. Um, and then these ones that are ten years old, nine to ten years old, what can we fetch for the market? So that influences our cash at year end. Right? Um, the other thing would be budget expenditures. You know, will we have a higher cash balance than the, what do they project side point something? Well, we have more like six million, which gives us another million dollars going forward. So those are some of the scenarios that I'll present next, next month, uh, with direction from you as a board. But I just wanted to point out, we're not the only one. I mean, Sandy City raised four dollars and ninety-five cents per home per month. And what that is, is they were using their general funds to subsidize their bulk waste collection that they do with their residents twice a year. And what the, and I got this story from Helen Kurtz during her interview to let us know what they did. They shifted that over to the actual sanitation fee for waste and recycling. So it's now, um, eighteen twenty-six per home per month. Uh, so it's a little more, I guess, yeah, transparent. And then also, yeah, what are they really paying? The other thing to note is those cities such as Sandy, Murray, um, Draper, South Jordan, Midvale and Riverton are member cities of Trans Jordan. And I've always wondered if they receive a revenue, those cities receive a revenue for being a member and they do. Um, I, I don't know the percentage, uh, but they do receive revenue to help to pay for the waste recycling. So that's something we do not have. South Salt Lake City, I've pointed out before that they don't pay any dumping fees because that transfer station is in their city. So they don't pay for any garbage fees. Um, they just went up two dollars per home per month. Riverton just went up three, Leftville went up two. Um, so I, my only point to this is just to say, we're not the only ones that have to read or are looking at this.
We're all about getting all those benefits, but some of these guys are getting.
Correct. Correct. Yeah. So that's the only point for them. Uh, any questions on that so far? Okay. The next one is the last, uh, meeting when we were talking about a, uh, that I woke up with a recommended fee increase in twenty or in September for next year's budget. It's for me to get out there to talk to your city council and explain the why. Um, just to note that I was out to Converton, uh, just last Wednesday and talked about the why. It was very simple. I didn't go into a lot of detail and then show them the cash, show them where we're at, what we're looking at, what the discussions you have been having with the board. Um, and I showed them that table that shows the cost increased up to five dollars per home per month for the past five years. Um, and then, you know, that lower rate in twenty twenty-three when we went to fifty increase. But that just is not sustainable. So we basically have eaten it up.
Yeah. Mayor House just messaged me and said, it's hard to hear you.
Oh.
Only had to leave the meeting. So.
Oh, thank you. I apologize. I think I'm getting, running out of gas. So the, the, this next, this table here, I want to thank you to Catherine for putting this together. I already did visit Converton. Um, Ted, uh, board member Spitzer did ask her counsel to basically say, would you be supportive of me voting in favor of a fee increase? And they basically said, yes. I know over there on the right side, it does say authorize. We don't necessarily need your counsel to authorize or approve it, but it never hurts to get the nod so that you feel comfortable coming to the table to, to vote what you need to, to, to keep it going. Um, so at any rate, there's dates and times. I'll be reaching out to your respective managers, um, administrators to see when I can get on the schedule. Yes, sir.
Small correction to ours, just the first Thursday.
Okay. And would you jump to the next page, Renee? We have a calendar. And, um, I need to get with Lori to get on your agenda for, is it, is that next week? Okay. And then Taylorville City, I'm already on your schedule. And the other thing I want to talk about with you all, and Renee will showcase this next year, or excuse me, next month. Um, is the keeping in compliance with H V one oh four, which is the recycling transparency. So she'll walk through. That's one of the other things I, I talk about when I come out to the business with you. That will help you pay. Any questions? I know that I really ran through that. Yeah, I think all, if, if you want to let me know, or I'll just reach out to your respective clerks or if you want. I'm sorry.
What's easier for you?
Um, I'm reaching out, making sure you know when I'm on. So I.
But you wanted to skip some of this.
Yeah, that's okay. I do have some time off that I have scheduled, uh, at the end of, uh, September. So.
No, Pam.
Like, well.
No. Sorry.
Yeah, I can't take my laptop because we're flying. All righty. But anyway, okay, I'll reach out. I think that's it for me.
Okay. Let's see. There is no close question. There. Any other business? All right. Requested items for the next board meeting on the September twenty-third. Introduction to the approval of G M's appointment for our new financial director. She sounds fabulous. I can't wait. Going to be such a big help for you. Um, the scrap report. Oh, I just love digging into data. So thank you, Renee. Uh, website review, uh, twenty twenty-five proposed budget recommendations for drug and alcohol policy and a review of the interlocal agreement with Salt Lake County for waste recycling, if that's available. So if there's nothing else, we'll, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
I motion to adjourn.
And second by Brad, I'll, I'll open favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Good week.
Thank you. You too, Matt.